All right, I call this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Rule call, please. Ister. Reichtner. Rocheus. Here. Barnhart. Here. Martina.
Here.
I have a proclamation for an Eagle Scout, which will be received here in December, so whereas on the 12th day of December Tyler Rattrick will be awarded the rank of Eagle Scout with the Troop 333 located at Zion Church in Sunbury. He has completed all the requirements put forth by the Boy Scouts of America to wear the Eagle Scout rank, whereas he went above and beyond expectations but not just earning the required 21 merit badges, the more than two of which come from the designated Eagle requirement, but in earning an additional 34 merit badges bringing his total to 55 badges, whereas he has completed trainings in first aid, learning a survival, stop to bleed, public health, personal fitness, hiking, cooking, and camping. Tyler did over 1,000 hours of community service, hiked 200 miles, and spent 100 nights in Pennsylvania wilderness. Tyler has completed over 1,000 days in leadership position serving as a then-cook, senior patrol leader, assistant senior patrol leader, and tour master. Now congratulations to Tyler on a great job well done for achieving his rank of Eagle Scout. Therefore, I and the merit city of Sunbury do make the 12th day of December here Tyler D. in honor of his Eagle Scout, so congratulations to him and that ranking. Councilman Barnhart, code enforcement update.
Talk to the Chief of Police, Acting Chief, I'm sorry, Acting Chief of Police Travis Remagen and Corporal Brad Slack, and Acting Supervisor Mike Rhodes and myself. Sit down with Joel, and we're trying to work out something right now where we can be, as it was put, an extension of the police. Right now, we're working out all the details. Joel wants to make sure that he's legal, so there's no liability, so everything's up and up, but we could be handling more like ordinance offenses and being able to handle that, hand out tickets and have a certain kind of training. We're working on the funding right now to make sure we have the money to be able to do that. So everything's in the works, as soon as we get it all lined up, if the I's done and the T's crossed, I'll bring it to the council for their approval, so I know they all want to make sure where the money's coming from, so, and the training, so. Do you have anything to add, Mike?
No, I just, I believe this is in the right direction for not only both departments in the city, but to residents, you know, because, you know, the police department sees things that they can act on for our part, and we see things that we can act for their part. Oh, I'm sorry, please excuse me. So, yeah, it's just gonna be a hand in hand, working together, and hopefully making it better for both departments and the residents of Sunbury.
Well, I brought up that, like, the 4th of July, maybe they have four or five firework calls, and there's a domestic, so where would you rather see them? And the people that have the firework calls, the residents, taxpayers of Sunbury, they want to see something happened with their fireworks, and this is a way for the code to be able to handle the ordinance end of it and let the police do the police work. This is just a way to help them.
Is that it, Councilman?
Yeah, I believe.
All right, sounds good, thank you. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time, any public comment? All right, there's some old business moving on, so last week Cory Fossil came in behalf of Haven Ministry to talk about possibly the city waiving slash, we'll say making the donation, is his words, of the fees that they would have to pay to the city. We spoke about that, gave us everyone some time to think, so I'm gonna make the motion that we waive the city portion of the Haven Ministry permit fee. Do I have a second?
One second.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Rocheus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on here, police vehicle sale, I just want to keep everybody in the loop on that. We've been continually talking about obviously selling that Tahoe that hasn't been put on the back burner yet, we've been communicating yet, so I just want everybody to know that it's continuing, it's not being forgotten about, so that's all I have. Councilman Martina?
I'm gonna turn up in the next few, Derek will give more information on all of that for us.
So last council meeting, you were presenting with the draft bike inspection audit, so I'm just looking for a vote from council to finalize that.
I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ister.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Rocheus. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Back to the vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Will there be a timeframe there?
Well, right now, I know the one municipality we were speaking to, they had, their meeting was after our meeting here, so they had to go to them and present them the funds, and obviously that won't be in their budget till 2020, next year, 2024, so we're just trying to get every, all the paperwork aligned, and then once they have their approval, then we can come back, get approval from us, to make sure all that stuff is in order.
So, we're talking about the sidewalk project.
Correct, yes.
That one, the strip bid?
Well, we kept it off of there because that one municipality was interested in it, and as Councilman Ister said, doesn't have to go on there, it's have to go up for big business in the municipality, and that'd be the quickest turnaround for them to get it and for us to get rid of it.
Then they're the ones that's wanting to do it.
Yes, we just have to wait to get their approval from their council. Like I said, we couldn't do it without.
If they took this bid, that we could.
The reserve bid, yeah.
Of that, of that.
Yeah, and that's, unless for some odd reason that does not take place with them, because that's what we agreed upon, then it would go on to municipal bid, but as of right now, they said basically waiting for their approval from council. Six and five. Yes. You're welcome, sir. Sergeant, keep going.
So sidewalk grant, this is just a discussion piece, not a vote piece. Last council meeting, a citizen brought up about Seals Grove, got some sort of grant for sidewalks. I did contact them, they used their CDVG funds for it. So we do, we get CDVG funds, so it's not any new grant or anything like that, so, and that's what we do use those funds for as well, so, one of the items I've used the funds for. So I just want to let everybody know, including the citizens, that we already obtained those funds and we do use those for sidewalks repairs in the city. Next thing is rescinding of the vote for the LSA Walnut Memorial Drive. After talking to the center's office, Councilwoman Martina and Steve Welker, the Director of Department, Supervisor, excuse me, DPW, it was decided based off of the cost and really what likely it awarded funding, grant funds, we would receive, it would not be enough to do a significant or appropriate amount on either one of those roadways as far as reconstruction goes.
What was the amount?
That, the cost of the project.
Well, no, but what was the, I know the Memorial Acre Drive was high, I talked to Steve in the past, but what were we doing on Walnut Street, that was in front of the school, right?
Correct.
So what construction were we doing down there?
Paying all the ADAs and repaving.
So what was the cost of that?
I don't have that front of me, as I know both of those projects combined were about a million dollars.
Million dollars of repaving from the high school and the ADA?
Including, and with, with both, yes.
So are we gonna, are we going to vote to apply for money to get those things done? Because, you know, Memorial Acre Drive is our main road into our recreational facilities, and that's, the road isn't the best, and you know the high school, that's one of the heavily traveled roads too for sporting events for our.
We're not not doing it, it's just with this project, this project will benefit one other, the next step versus the current step.
And when, I've been saying, well, and when you only, say we apply for a million dollars, and their max that they would give, we'll say is 100, that you could expect even if you were awarded, they're gonna question where is the other 900,000 coming from to even do part of the project itself? So therefore, they're more likely to deny you because that is a significant amount of money that quite frankly, liquid fuels or anything else, we can't cover with, so that would be a significant issue as far as even being awarded any funding. Even if we were decided to do one of those roadways, we're still looking at maybe we would just proceed 25% if that of the actual cost of doing even one of them.
So are we gonna continue and get updates on where funding sources are gonna come from to do those roads?
I mean, it's honestly the same funding that we keep going for everything else.
I mean, yes.
Right, you know the problem though, municipal authority has two projects. One, Monroe Drive, running a new service on Monroe Drive, which is, the engineering isn't started yet, and then also Walnut Street, the line that comes from the river which we craft water to the water point.
Yeah.
Okay, that needs upgrading, so they said before you go paving that, you want to have a study done, what you're gonna do with the.
So do we have a, like, do we have a timeline on those?
No.
Holy cow, I could be dead and gone by then.
I hope not, you're not. My body's saying, so everything, those two projects are on the back burner right now until the authority gets there or done.
And I, so we need a vote to rescind that vote, because there was a vote taken in the meeting.
All right, I'll make the motion to rescind the vote, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Rocheus. Yes.
And then, I need a vote to go for the LSA for the DPW building upgrades. That would be more in line based off the conversation of what we could be awarded. It is 159,000, 153 dollars, I believe, is the resolution amount, but that would be more in line if we were so chosen for that grant, we'd have a better chance of getting that full funding, and that would do what we were quoted from our engineer in combination with what was awarded from the county and the funds coming from DPW to actually finish a significant portion of work particularly.
So would that finish all of it, like the exterior, like the roof, building sides all the way up, all the way around?
Exterior.
So the entire exterior, like the roof and all four sides?
After.
All the doors, side panels, the blocks, the wall, any of the blocks.
So would that include all four walls?
Yes.
Okay, and then we're gonna go for money for the roof then?
Yes.
I'm just saying, because without a good roof, doesn't matter how good a wall you have, so.
I appreciate that, but one step at a time.
I figured it would've been a roof, but.
Any money budget for that, and start for the next project.
For the roof?
For any of the projects that you're gonna now go for.
I do believe we, because we've been working towards it, working towards trying to get a step done each year that we can for that building. I don't have a copy of funding for that project for that.
So are we gonna move that down to the budget?
We don't have anything in the budget for this project, except our.
It was a match, they needed, the county gave us what, 50, 50,000.
We have our 50,000 budget, so we do have that, that puts in there, so that's going towards it, the rest, no.
So it's specifically for this?
Yes.
None of what we're going for at the LSA is in the budget.
No, except our match, correct.
It's a phase, we have 100,000 to start the project.
No, no, sorry.
Apply for the grant, we'll do phase one, we'll do a section of the building, and then we can take that and do another phase of the building. Does, are your marks right there?
For a match, right? As far as I'm aware, yes.
Because, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not gonna use that money for something else.
It's, it was supposed to be your mark, yes.
From the county, and from us for the match for the county for that, yes.
Make the motion, Councilwoman Martina.
Go on, okay, everybody, sorry, I can't make that motion.
Second. Ister.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Rocheus. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Moving on to new business, so last meeting, Jody Acker was here with other people from SRI to ask us and explain a support letter for SRI to help them, we'll say, go into their first phase with their project, to help bring investors, promotion. Jody, fill me in here, could you do a better job than what I would do?
Yes, what it was, I was explaining the blueprint communities program, we're applying to that to be recognized as a blueprint community. We've assembled a team of people from the community, and our focus area is going to be the downtown revitalization, including commercial and upper level living, because we know that upper level living with, helps drive economic growth with retail and other businesses downtown, so the blueprint communities designation application is due this Friday, and we've asked for a letter of support. I've provided the council with the handouts with more detailed information, and any questions at this time?
No. Any questions for Jody, anyone? All right, so I'll make the motion to give that letter of support to SRI for the community blueprint, do I have a second? Reichtner.
Yes.
Rocheus. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister. And then, moving on, because the next one kind of goes hand in hand, the city has to have representative on the board with SRI to represent the city and the community blueprint, and we also have to vote upon that to be in there. I know Derek was calling Lisa, since Derek's our administrator and our city liaison, so we talked about having Derek do that, and he was okay with that, so does anyone have an issue with that before we make a motion for that?
Wrong choice.
With Lisa.
This way.
I'll second, please. Ister.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Rocheus. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina. Councilman Barnhart, go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank all the property owners for taking care of all their problems with falling properties, so I make the motion to remove the falling properties from the nuisance list, 111, 113 South 3rd Street, 149, 151, 155 Race Street, 419 South 2nd Street, 739, 737 Market Street, 750 Edison Avenue, 1106 Susquehanna Avenue, 148, 150 East Chester Street.
1148.
What did I say? 1148, my glasses are broken.
I'll second. Ister.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Rocheus. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Yes.
I make the motion to update the public nuisance list.
Second. Reichtner.
Yes.
Rocheus. Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
On the back, Councilman Reichtner.
Okay, we have a steam bill, so 60,000, $65, 78 cents from the general fund, $945.35 from liquid fuels, private grants, $33,943.14, and $71,026.41 from payroll, make less than payroll bills.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Rocheus. Yes. All right, discussion items, Councilman Barnhart.
Yeah, we had a meeting about the Heritage Days, River Fest was, we were talking about them, I think more needs to be discussed. We're gonna have another meeting in December 7th at 6 o'clock downstairs in the back conference room, anybody interested to throw around their ideas or be involved? Like I said, December 7th, it's a Thursday night, 6 o'clock in the back, in the downstairs conference room.
Do I have anything else? All right, moving on, public notification system, I've been throwing this around, but Jeff has been helping me do some research on this, so, public notification system for every citizen of Sunbury, you know, if there's emergencies, alerts, meetings, whatever, just so the public's aware of what's going on, wherever it may be. The one company we looked at, this is the first one that got back to us, it was, what was it called, Red, Code Red? Code Red, so it was for three years, and they gave us 25,000 minutes, free emails and free text messages. The free text message and emails were great, but they only 25,000 minutes, I mean, over a course of three years, you know, you break it down, it's really not that much. So we're in contact with another company right now about everything, it was unlimited, unlimited minutes, text, emails, waiting to get a cost back from them now, so I just want to give everybody an update on that, because it's similar to what the school district does, you know, it's an notification system, I know they did it last time for the last emergency here in Sunbury, does this county, does the county do that also sometimes for emergencies?
You had a county pass for, I don't know how you register for, because they said, yes.
You put it out to everybody in the city, and they choose to register by cellphone, by text, by email.
No, no, I'm not worried about your site, I'm talking about the county system.
Oh.
The county system, I don't know how you register for that. Because I know it was hit and miss.
Yeah.
The other, the other night last week, there was a situation in Nori.
Yeah.
Text went out to different people.
But not everybody.
Somewhere in that area, somewhere in White County.
Yeah.
So I don't know how it works, I looked at it, I tried to go on, I looked around, I didn't get on to it, so.
How does it work?
I mean, as I said, we're just getting information on it.
Steve Jeffrey, that's how he described it, Code Red we had in the market reaction, that's what they used, just go pay the messages, still get the messages, but they have a map, you can have a map of the city of Sunbury, and if your incident is at 4th and Market, you can take that map, and you can move your fingers in, and then put a circle around it, notify everybody, boom, hit a button, and it's out. They're gonna get a text, they're gonna phone call, whatever you choose, they're gonna get it, and immediately, they don't have to wait for Facebook, they'll get it from us.
How do we get it, how do we, how do they get registered, right?
They'll help us with the notification systems, and I'm sure we can use our.
I think he's asking how to get the people to sign up.
Yes.
Our code records, we have, we have a lot.
So we would just have to pretty much go out to everybody, notify everybody, we're using this, and here's how we can get them registered.
Yeah, pretty much.
Both caught, both, they gave us maybe costs, nothing solid yet, we have 10,000 people, I said, we're fighting about 5,000 notifications in bad times, but normal notifications might be 200, 300, hopefully, it's a smaller base.
It'll be basically in the area.
Correct, and actually, we can do it just by, like, putting our fingers on a map, and those people, they're immediately, so.
I can talk to SNR, they have a current water system, so I don't know if it's something that we can use the same company, can you back off them, maybe we can get a discount?
I'm not sure they use, I don't think they use it very well.
I know they use the system, I don't know if they use it very well.
They use the system.
It's a water issue?
And how many, they use it before?
I don't know, they just send one out, not to.
Might be, might be phone bill, might be phone bill.
I mean, they have records themselves.
Your water bill. Water bill.
I have 500 too, that's probably.
But I would suggest just to get a whole, let's see, how do we manage it? Do they have a perfect, the water bill, of course.
Get your numbers, get your contact information then.
See, but the bad thing with that is the renters, you're gonna contact the owners who live in Houston, Texas, we said.
Correct.
We said, you know, for those at the market, but we got a lot.
Yeah, but like one of those things, like I said.
School, because they have all your.
Yeah, they have all that, but you know, it's one of those things we're looking into, it's not gonna be perfect right off the bat, but something we're looking into, and you know, as the word gets out there, I'm assuming more people want to sign up for, just get the notifications of wherever it may be, so, except we're looking into it, yeah, so we're getting there. Any questions more on that one? All right, moving on, so Dollar General, so as you know, Dollar General closed down Market Street beginning of this year, correct? Or the last year? Last year, sorry, everything's running together, in my age, you know. So they've been trying to find a different location in the city of Sunbury, they haven't found anything yet, I've been in contact with the person, I believe we met with the city, Pat? Pat Higgins, he said they want to be in the city of Sunbury, they don't want to be outside the city of Sunbury, so the one, I know this came up in the past, and we didn't really move on it, so I'm just trying to see how council's feeling on this, so the one location they looked at was a skate park, because they said it's in a business corridor in there, I'm like, gosh, we can't lose our skate park, it's not gonna happen, the council's never gonna go for that, so they're like, there was a couple options on the table, so obviously, they're gonna pay us for that piece of property, so they said a piece of property like that in today's market, configuring between 200 to 300,000. I'm like, all right, so what about our skate park? So I gave them the dimensions of the skate park, what we need, like, you know, parking there, the lights, everything we have there right now, so they took it to their engineers, whoever does their schematics, and it came back to move it, to put over there by the tennis courts, looking at, we'll say, a wash in price, similar price of buying the land versus them building it over there. So, I mean, so there's a couple options, we could have them do the wash, they build it, they move it, we don't do any work, or they could say, we give the city of Sunbury, we'll say, $300,000, it's your responsibility to move it, so, and to bring us up to council, because if we, whatever route we want to choose, if we want to choose to move forward on that, I think it's something we gotta look into, because, you know, it's a new property, bringing tax revenue, bringing jobs, at the same time, we get a brand new state of the art skate park out of it as well. I mean, Jim, you were on council when they first built the skate park, how long ago, you know, getting a new one here at no additional cost to taxpayers, the city of Sunbury, and also getting money to, you know, put towards grant money or matching funds to get a new skate park, I think it's something we should look into for all the pros that can come out of this, so does anybody have any questions regarding this?
Questions, but I got, you know the building I'm gonna tell you about, they could tear that down and put one up right there. Would they be interested in that, that way you're downtown, it's more accessible for the high rises to walk.
Yeah, but I'm gonna say, that was what, John, that's what they brought to us, so, you know, for them, you know, to do something like that, they'd have to buy the building, then tear it down, then rebuild a whole brand new building again, so that's why they're looking at, there's, it's, I don't see vacant land, but flat land already, there's no tearing down, it's just buying and building, so that's what, that's what they're looking for when they came to us, I mean, I can't speak to them, that's what their developers were looking at for a piece of property, to stay in the city of Sunbury.
They went and looked at a ton of properties downtown, throughout the city, and when Jeff was in code, I know everybody was trying to push them to go downtown, it just wasn't feasible cost-wise and size-wise and location-wise, it just wasn't feasible.
They're looking for 15,000 square feet on an old building, 12,000 on a brand new build, and there was nothing, nothing that suited them on the, on market, so they go.
Question, if they, the skate park, those to them, they in turn are going to rebuild, upgrade.
Over.
Over there, but they're gonna do all the upgrades, do you?
Well, it would be just moving it now, like.
So they're just gonna move the existing part?
Exactly, exactly.
We're gonna have to put the bill of all the upgrades to be done.
Yes, like, for example, if you want new ramps, that's on us, like, they're just moving what's there, in my opinion, I think, this is my opinion only, we're better off taking the money, putting the slab down ourselves, not doing it ourselves, but having someone do it, and we have all that money for matching grants to help get new ramps or a new bill, or getting away from the wooden steel ramps, just going straight concrete, how a lot of different municipalities are, so you don't have that maintenance of things breaking, it's just all the concrete ramps and all that, things like that, so like I said, this is a chance for us to get a new skate park, do the business, and jobs, and tax revenue. Questions?
You know, anything I see as a problem up there is the increase in traffic you're gonna have on that side where the vaults are, where there's a lot of kids, parking lot, things like that, also, you know, when you have your events up there, that's gonna increase the flow of traffic into that area if you have events going on.
There was a lot of area that they would choose normally for that, foot events.
I mean, I understand that, but, you know, I mean, are we gonna put the bill to get new stuff, and, so like, there's pros and cons, everything here, so we're gonna look at that and make a decision how we want to move.
You need to be careful with traffic up there, because there's a lot of kids up there, baseball, baseball, they're gonna spread in the summer, the baseball's on, got a lot of traffic up there that I don't know if it might increase the flow by having.
Oh, I get it.
Well, it's something we look at, but by the same token, John, it's a good point, Julie just been talking about economic development downtown, it's trying to, the foot traffic that provides downtown.
Well, there's not a place for them to go, there's not a place for them, they looked at it extensively, like, I'm all with you on it, but if they said there's no location, there's no location, if they want to put one here, we can get jobs, cash revenue, new skate park, you know, how many people do you hear of kids, and seeing it yourself, kids skateboarding right down 4th Street, you know, get them off that street, get them on the side, get them on more like your driveway, less busy street, so, I mean, I just wanted to bring[1724.66] So, I mean, I, I just wanted to bring this up to council, so.
Give them the old police station, let them tear it down. Give them the.
I don't think, I don't think you're gonna get fifteen thousand to twelve thousand square feet out of that small area on the first floor.
That's something else, because it's landlocked, they can't get it from the back.
Yeah, how they get your trucks in delivery.
For their deliveries and stuff like that. That was a sell-off, that's probably.
We don't own it.
Well, I know we don't own it, but we had the opportunity to get it, I guess, at one point. Is that now nothing like that happening?
That's all at the table.
Okay.
Yeah, so. But like I said, that was just information from Dollar General, not Dollar General, but from their representative, I just wanted to pass that on to council. Any other questions, anyone? All right, moving on, fee schedule, we have to do this every year. In your packet, you will see the different fee schedules that, you know, that we, that we have for the different charges for different things in town. The one thing, I'm gonna make a suggestion that we either change or upgrade. I wish Kevin was here because he's a stickler on this, is the online paying of the parking meters. I know Spence on a little bit, how they have their fees and how sometimes we get X amount of dollars in revenue in. But looking into it, the reason is because of those online convenience fees. Instead of passing them off onto the person using the, using, well, I don't wanna say the act, using the text to pay because we're eating those fees. I mean, like, the same people that pay their parking tickets online, if you look, there's a convenience fee for paying it online. So, I think you should up the, up it for if you're gonna use that online text to pay to cover those user fees like every other municipality does. They don't, they don't eat it themselves, they pass it on to the user, just like anytime you use your credit card somewhere, they pass it on to the user, so. I'm gonna make that suggestion, I don't know if anyone is opposed to that or has thoughts on that.
I got a question on, on something here.
Yes, sir.
I think it's changed, and I'm not quite sure.
What page on there?
I'm on page five, the annual parking permit. That used to be parking anywhere that, that fee, now it just says any meter. That before, prior, that fee allows you to park in any city parking lot with that ticket, with that ticket, that four hundred dollars or three, three fifty a year. And now it just says just meters. Is that changing or are we?
I think that was a, I think that was an issue with the police they had because before, like you said, they, it used to only be the meters, now it says, I mean, excuse me, parking lots?
And meters, but anywhere in the city.
Yes, so are you saying it should be just the parking lots or any?
No, it's more now, I mean, permit meters. It doesn't say anything about any parking lot or anything.
I mean, like it says.
Annual parking permit, any meter. It has parentheses.
Yeah, I see it there. I mean, that could be something we could change or ask, or ask.
It has been any place.
Change it to any meter.
Or lots, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's what I would recommend anyway, yes.
Okay.
The other question I have to ask.
Yes, sir.
Any of these, any of these go off?
For the, I mean, for the online text to pay, is that what you're referring? Oh, do these? No, no, but it said this is what they currently are. As I'm saying, right now, we gotta determine if we're gonna stay the same, if we're gonna raise something, lower something, whatever it may be.
Well, we'll do that before we do the budget.
Well, yeah, but I mean, this, I mean, these are like everything, like, these are like for like parking.
Well, I understand that.
But we said we didn't.
Part of the cap generation.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I don't think it's gonna go down because nothing's going down.
And those, those annual fees are, I don't think we do twenty of them a year. But when you're used to applying them and being able to park your parking lot and go to the business or whatever, where we bought them, now all of a sudden you have to be in a meter someplace.
Yeah, so like I said, I just wanted to bring this everyone's attention, I know one caught your eye saying, like, this is way too, this has to be brought up, so.
John, make sure, John.
John.
So, the fees that we're being charged, Marty, are the factor and so forth, the. Not, not to tell you to see, but poor Thomas is out there, we're gonna make sure his fees are matched up.
I mean, did anyone see anything that comes out of the ordinary right now that they, I mean, I'll just use that, Jim, make sure the fees are matched up, but. I mean, I think that's a big thing that the, the finance department has to see. I mean, some of it's something they can control, like, obviously, Code knows what his fees are, the different ones, but like, that's something we have to dive into to make sure it's staying what it is.
This is very, can I just ask you to be a little more clear on the rest of Thomas's piece? Did you make a change last year that any, any reviews or by, by management checking is, is engaged by? I'm not sure, how many hearings is this going to like? I'm sorry? The hearings, when we have a hearing, public hearings, or for those fees, do they adjust them correctly in here? Oh, okay, I understand what you're saying, okay, thank you. Bring in the listener, the listener. Right. The apotheker. Okay. You gonna handle that, Mike? Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah, I understand that, okay, I, I thank you for that.
Spence, in your opinion, return checks is twenty-five dollars, I mean, you go anywhere, it's more than twenty-five dollars.
I'd say it's thirty-five.
That's what I'm saying, do we wanna up that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, what, what do you think?
You're gonna have.
I said twenty dollars.
You put fifty.
Forty, what was that?
I said fifty dollars.
They have, they have hundreds.
They're anywhere from thirty-five to forty-five at most banks now.
All right, so we'll up that from twenty-five to fifty, drive in like that forever. And so, another one that Jeff pointed out, the quality of life ticket. I mean, it's, Mike.
It's too much, it's twenty-five and fifty right now, twenty-five with double fifty.
What page?
Page two.
Page two. Page two.
Sorry.
Third one down, page two, and then about thirty-two A, and then about ten down. The quality life ticketing, Mike, we've been there for a couple of years, we've been there for a few years.
Yeah, I wish I could have a copy of that.
Very, no, we just cracked them open now, do you want one? I mean, you can have.
Yeah, you can have mine, Mike.
Are you complaining when they take the decision tonight or?
No, it's just, no, it's just saying, hey, this is what we wanna make it to the next meeting, then we'll finalize it for twenty twenty-four.
Do we have one more meeting?
Quality life on twenty-five, changing it to something else, whether it's thirty.
Do you know, is that historically for a lot of? You know, I'm not sure, see, I'm not sure if that's in third class, we can't, I think that's something you guys made up. Something you guys made up.
Sure, I know, I've seen a set.
I don't know what's in there. But I mean, if you want it, it's like fifty and a hundred, I'll look at it. No, obviously, I don't know what, what, I don't know, I don't know what works, but it's, it's, it turned a lot. It turned a lot of bushes, trees, grass.
It works, you know, it works.
Yeah, so if anyone has any other changes, like, get them to Jeff or get them to Kevin so we get an updated one because like I said, it has to be going along with our budget next meeting. Questions, anyone on that one? All right, and the last one here, Spence, I know you wanted to talk about the twenty twenty-two audit.
Yeah, um, we're trying, we need to get John back in. I had contact with him, basically, what the issue is is that it's held up because they've never got.
Capital assets. Did you get it? I just sent in, I sent it in today and she's, she's gonna look at it, capital assets, we've never sent in.
Yeah.
So, I sent the capital assets today.
It's sitting there, all this.
What was never sent in? Capital assets, since May it was.
And they never reached out to us saying they.
Yeah.
I said they reached out a few times, but I never got the message.
Who'd they reach out to?
I didn't get it.
That's the excuse I use too sometimes.
No, but I, I did it today.
Oh, I was reaching out, they never got back to me.
No, they, they basically reached out to some of them, they didn't say anything, so I got away.
No, that's fine, but we got it in, so was anything else that they needed?
No. If we did get it in, the issue was gonna be whether the council wanted to vote against me to move forward with the audit without that being in.
Okay.
Questions? That was due or odd, it was sent.
Okay.
So, Jeff said, is, right?
She said she didn't get back to me this week and let me know if there's anything else I missed. I took everything I could find out of the article, added it.
Jeff, whatever you sent her, I think we just go.
I hope so, I mean, I, I.
I mean, they'll come back and say something you're a little right.
Another one, I did not miss your story. Correct. So, whatever you missed. It was for. Did you send?
It was for twenty-two though, everything was twenty-two. Okay, that's what I found, that's what I, everything's twenty-two.
Yeah.
Does there, does there any changes based on?
Yeah, so whatever gets, yeah. Any, anybody else, everybody good? All right, announcements, the Santa Train Ride, December second and third, tickets are available online in the mayor's office. I believe we have.
We have about twenty tickets left.
About twenty-some odd tickets left, so make sure you get your tickets, or if you know someone looking for tickets, they know where to purchase them. I, I don't.
Thirteen dollars.
Thirteen dollars.
Two and, two and under are free.
Two and under are free. New Year's Eve celebration's coming up, free skate with refreshments while supplies last, up with the ice skating rink from one to four, and the downtown celebration from eight till about midnight. Everything is free unless you're gonna purchase something, and they're both family-friendly events. And at this time, is there any public comment at this time? Please say your name, sir.
My name's Bill Brown, and I'd like to make a comment on your Dollar General's board, okay? As recently as today, my grandson had a little flyer about going to the skate park. I use that skate park religiously. To me, the skate park's way more important than a Dollar General, that's my opinion, you've all got it.
Yeah. I say, we're going to.
I agree with needing a Dollar General. But every single penny you get for that property should be earmarked only for where it's gonna go and we should be guaranteed. When I coached Little League, our skate park was Little League ball field, I was coached on that field. Now, we've got a, a skate park, and if any of you people go up there, it's a hunk of garbage, it's falling down. The, the stuff is worth seven cents a pound in scrap. So, the lets online saying we're gonna move it for you, they're just, they're taking your money, is all they're doing. They're taking your money. You need a guaranteed price for that piece of property and a guaranteed place where that skate park is gonna go. Because I raised two boys in this city, and ask me where they're at. Neither one of them are here, neither one of them are raising their children here. They both left, there's very little for the kids in this area. Like I said, just as recently as today, my grandson wanted to go to the skate park. We live up there, we need it.
Oh, I get.
I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Alex, it's way too crowded at that end of town. Dollar General's gonna find out real quick when there's something going on in tournaments. Nobody's gonna go park at the parking lot. That's, neither here nor there, I don't care. We cannot go with less than the children in this city.
Oh, I agree, like I said.
We cannot take away from our kids.
Oh, it would only happen.
I mean, we can't do that, not even for a day. It needs to be moved right away. Not, well, we're gonna get the money now and maybe next summer we'll build. Because then it'll get put, like you guys say, on the back burner, and it goes to the back burner. Now, here's, I got all my grandchildren wanting to go to the skate park, it's a good skate.
But no, I agree with you, like, there wouldn't be, we would not go without a skate park. And as you said, there wouldn't be, it's not gonna be there, it'd be like, all right, this gets built, then this gets built.
But what I'm saying, Mayor, is I know what that park is worth.
Oh.
It's worth nothing, but on that concrete right now, the concrete's not worth anything, it's all broke. Every bit of it's broke somewhere. Every piece of equipment up there is broke somewhere, at least one place. Every bit of it is not worth moving. Because they're coming in here and telling you, we done the survey and we can put that on another slab of concrete. Sure they can, but who wants it?
That's my, that's my.
Who wants it? Your idea of going with solid concrete, give them something like indoor swimming, in-ground swimming pool areas is way better.
Well, that's, that's my, that would be my idea, that's it.
We cannot take away from your children anymore. I don't.
You're right, he is right, this is true.
Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name, ma'am.
Ms. Verzus. Today, I stopped in with Jeff and we pretty much have the finalization of our Shapetree shirts. We gave you a copy of what it's gonna look like.
I'll give it to him tomorrow then.
Shame.
Forgot it. Sorry.
So, so in speaking with Jeff, I understand that we're still on the money express to get things around. So, I don't know if there would be a way, I'm gonna defer to Derek, if there would be like an email that they could return what they're not to essentially order, to like, definitely an email or something like that. I don't know what your capabilities are for software. I know it's weak. But anyway, I gave Jeff the basics, however you want the order to come back to City Hall, we'll kind of mimic that when we put it out elsewhere, but wanted to let you know that it's moving. We also ordered a, a sample of what it's gonna look like so you can.
Visually see it, yeah.
Showcase it in, you know, your office. Takes approximately a week and we'll pick it up and make sure that you get it. The other thing I was curious about was, there's some trees that had come to the city. It was originally gonna be a two-wheel parking playground area, that that kind of fell through. So, I just happened to be down at the barn and noticed that they're down there. What's the plans for those?
I actually thought they were moved up today.
No, they're still laying down there, no.
I'll be on the phone tomorrow morning with Mr. Law to see where we're at.
Okay.
We talked last week and the Christmas decorations, they were sidelined.
Right.
I'll find out tomorrow morning.
So.
When'd you get them in?
It's been in under a week's about.
When were they moved up?
Yeah.
That's why the form of the, the.
Okay. Okay, so you just know where they're gonna be planted? Because what we wanted to do was just take some pictures, you know, and put them on our page. The other thing I wanted to just throw out there is that there has been discussion about solar. Has there given any thought to maybe putting it down at the sewer plant, on top of buildings? You know, it's on this side of the wall instead of that side of the wall where it might be flooded? Just throwing that out there.
I mean, I, I can't speak about municipal thoroughly buildings.
Couple of years ago, got a grant for a million dollars, put them out there where the reservoirs are. And after they did all the numbers, they sent the million dollar back and wasn't cost effective.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? All right, journey's beginning.